Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October very rainy, wet Board. And with us Eric Sizney, Cameron. And Eric, we are missing this evening our colleague, Gina Steiner, who has got an excused absent. Jason, would you like to welcome the rest of the team?
Absolutely. Missing from our team tonight is Lucretia Robertson, Director of DEI and Human Resources, and Deputy Director Dan Baer of Finance and Operations. They are excused tonight, but our rest of our fantastic team is here. From left to right, we have Tammy Jeffries, Executive Assistant. We've got Deputy Director of Public Services Shannon Peterson, Director of Strategy and Communications Jeanne Allen. I've got Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation Wendy Kyle. And last, but certainly not least, is the Director of Facilities Maintenance and IT Mike Rose. No presentations or special guests with me tonight.
Great, thank you. And I'm going to move back to the reading of the mission statement. Eric Sizney?
Our mission statement is inspiring our community to dream more, learn more, do more, and be more.
Thank you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none. We also do not have public comment this evening, though we welcome it. Included in the consent agenda for this evening are the meeting minutes for the September 15th retreat, as well as the regular board meeting in September. It's hard for me. I printed the agenda out differently than I normally do, which was a mistake, apparently. We also have in the consent agenda, this is helpful, thank you. So we have minutes of the September 15th board retreat, minutes of the September 26th regular board meeting. We also have a corrected for August 7th bills for 2023 payroll and benefits. We have payment of the September 2023 bills, payroll and benefits, and the blanket voucher bills, as well as the surplus library materials withdrawn from the collection for September 2023, which is 3,134 items. That always fascinates me, how many items are moving through the library at any given time. Those are in the consent agenda. Does anybody have an issue with that being moved as one motion? Or, okay, with that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I saw a move.
Second?
A second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. We approved the consent agenda.
If you want to leave your drink, I can leave this.
Yeah, I'm gonna also, I can pull it up on mine, too. Just, they don't like what I printed out.
Sure.
It's all spread out. This evening, we just have standard presentation reports and briefings. We don't have any external, per Jason. Board reports to start with?
I, let's see, on October 7th, Manchester Community had the Oktoberfest, which is the last of the four major community gatherings at Manchester. I took an old antique cider press down there and demonstrated how cider used to be made on the farm. Very, and anyway, it's really great to get several hundred people from the Manchester community together. And also attended Staff Day, which I thought went really well, and I enjoyed it. Kudos to the staff committee. I thought it was really well organized, and just went a lot, went great.
Marwan?
So for me, the downtown branch has a special place in my heart, for me. And unfortunately, with it having its renovations, it's not able to serve the unhoused right now. But there are a lot of organizations that have kind of come forward to serve the unhoused down on ML King and Broadway. And unfortunately, the numbers seem to be growing. The shelter is going to open up on November 1st, and a lot of the folks that are unhoused miss their library, and so they're looking forward to it opening back up. So I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I echo Eric's statement on Staff Day. I wasn't able to attend the whole day, but I was very impressed with how everything was put together. It looked like everyone came in with a, with a lot of energy, which was great to see. So, thank you for organizing. Thank you for putting it all together.
I also was at Staff Day. That was a tremendous offering, I'd have to say. In fact, just walking away in terms of, well, first of all, just the amount of creativity that went into it, and things like unconferencing, where's that been all my life? In terms of being able to create, because I think what I realized, particularly when you work with an organization as big as KRL and as far-flung as the staff, is that the chance just to be in a room, because they migrate around somewhat, so they may have started in one place, and then they go to work in another location, but then they get to see kind of their old friends. And you could just really feel that in the room. And I was also really impressed as I got down and I was looking at the speakers, because I assumed wrongly that, you know, they'd be kind of local people. And so there was a clear investment made in bringing speakers to that gathering, which is a clear investment in staff. And I think it just made me proud, first of all, and, and that the leadership team is walking the talk about the, the investment and the development, not only professionally, but personally, I think, in the library. And there was just so much cool stuff in the room. And so I really was, I felt glad to be there. So I really feel lucky that we get invited to be a part of that, and, and to really just hang out for the day. So, it was phenomenal. And, and the other thing this week is that I'm personally doing in representation of the library is I'm, I'm going to meetings with Wendy to do some outreach in support of the Port Orchard Library campaign. And I think we had a, we had a call yesterday, and I, I left and was really struck, because these are people that are not really engaged with us. They love Manchester, by the way, Eric. And I was just really struck how easy of a case this actually is. People, they love their libraries. And when you ask them to lean in, they don't, they don't hesitate a whole lot. So I thought, well, gosh, that was a little bit easier than, than I was expecting potentially. So it was, it was great fun. So, Marwan, are you going to be reporting out from the Strategic and Long Range Planning Committee? That's next.
So a few things to report. One, we are still bargaining is happening to restore ours, so that's still undergoing. Contract talks are still happening, and folks are hopeful, so I'm happy to hear that. In regards to the naming policy, looking at the historic legacy, and what that is going to consist of, also looking at discussion about more robust policies and procedures for the naming rights inside the library. Another thing that was discussed was the framework for success. I won't share out any details on that this evening, more forthcoming. I'll just say that definitely like the direction, and are very appreciative of all the hard work that's gone into working on this plan here, which is, again, can't underscore the undertaking and the work that goes into bringing this forward. And then lastly, the equity team is looking at the land acknowledgement and discussing development of how and when it will be used. And that is my report.
Any questions for Marwan? Thank you. We have the financial report. I presume because Dan's, are you going to do that report, Jason?
Dan's report will stand as read.
Yeah. And I have gone through it, and I think there seem to be even more annotations than, than even normal, which is great. So I didn't have any questions. Are there any questions people had around the financial report? We still are tracking, as we have almost perfect budgeting on Dan's part, in terms of being able to keep pace with where we are, both with revenue, which is slightly ahead because of tax collection, but revenue and expenses are keeping pace with where they should be, in line with where we are also in the fiscal year. So, nothing there. Which brings us then, Jason, to your report.
Absolutely. Good evening again. So we finished off summer with our inaugural Staff Day barbecue. I'm calling it inaugural, because we're hoping to do this on a yearly basis. And this is a day for families, their friends, and, and it's really a day of celebration. So we held that on Sunday, September 3rd. And the event was sponsored by the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation. Thank you, Wendy, and Foundation. So events like these, I think, I don't think I know they're mission-driven. Part of our mission is our staff, right? And so we aim to, you know, we want to align, events like this, I think, are aligned with our core values of building connections with our staff. And, and that's what that day was all about. And because it's hard to do that on a daily basis when you're, you know, for us as a leadership team, often our time is spent in planning meetings, leadership team meetings, you know, and the like. And so there's not a lot of opportunity to bond with staff and to, to get to know them on a personal level. So, really appreciative that we can have times like this. And so we aim to continue to support staff, not only on days like that, but, you know, mentoring, coaching, training, and building up staff with recognition, as we did on Staff Day. For those of you who were here, that's a big part of what we do, celebrating staff on a monthly basis with the nominations that come in for Star of the Month, or Stars of the Month. And then, you know, our, our Staff Day, of course, was fun-filled with, or the barbecue was fun-filled day. Leadership took on the heavy load of shopping for the day, setting up, breaking down, cooking, serving, all of it, right? And so that's a day completely driven for, for staff's enjoyment. And so, you know, events like these, again, are, are about building solid organizational culture. I've talked about this in this forum a number of times, and it's worth revisiting now. Part of the, my role is to build and, and solidify organizational culture. And I think this team, this leadership team, has done a phenomenal job at, you know, supporting that. And so it's about camaraderie. Culture building is something I'll continue to invest in as a library director. I think this board knows that it's, you know, one of my top priorities in being here. And so there are no shortcuts to this either. It takes time, and so it's a long game. And so one event won't do it, and we, we don't do an event to say, hey, look at us, this is what we've done. But it's a long game. And so in order to build culture, there are no shortcuts, is essentially what I'm saying. So, we've, and we've done this for leadership as well, you know. It's opportunities to break bread and to invest towards building bridges throughout the organization. So we hope the event is bigger next year. We're actually planning a block club this year, but we couldn't pull together permitting and, and, you know, timing for that. But eventually, what we're looking at is a, you know, partial street closure and being a celebration, not only of our staff, but the community as well. So we'll plan out for the future. You know, it's starting small, but eventually, we hope to grow that event. For the last quarter of the year, which we've moved into, it's really about planning for 2024. We've accomplished a lot, and I'll share with the board in the next couple months, where we are on organizational goals for this year. But, you know, this isn't a time to really necessarily reflect on what we've done this year, because we've still got a bit more work to do before the end of the year is out. So we're not slowing down. Our plan is to, you know, align our organizational goals to our strategic plan, which is forthcoming. And, and, you know, we're going to be busy aligning our teams to the new strategic vision next year, which we hope to pass that strategic vision in, you know, the next couple months. And so, in human resources news, just to move on, and we'll talk more about the strategic plan later, we onboarded four new staff members in, in September, and two others, and two new, four new staff members in public services, and two others in public services moved to different positions, while one staff member had to resign, and that staff members from the Community Learning Internship, and that is Andrew Perry. I want to say a couple things about Andrew. And we've talked, and you've seen a presentation about our Community Learning Internship, and I hope the board remembers that. But one of the shining examples of that, and there are many, is Andrew. I had the opportunity to meet Andrew when, in my community canvassing work, and when he was a cadet at the Washington Youth Challenge. And so, interesting story, got to meet the young man as a cadet, and he remembered me months later. And, and, you know, we happened to cross paths when he was here again, and started to build a relationship, and, you know, went out to lunch, and, and really attended his going away party. But really want to laud the work of, you know, our, our team, really, Lisa, Megan, Shelby, what they put into this program is purely phenomenal. They really nurture and care for the program and its participants. So I really want to shout out that team for all they do for the Community Learning Internship. And, you know, they're all stars. And, and speaking of stars, the last month, we celebrated two of them, Sarah Jaffa and Rosie Bronberg of the Collection and Technical Services, who are lauded for their work in leading an internal readers' advisory training, which we do often, occasionally, just to give folks, you know, some ideas about how to do readers' advisory in a library, and how to sharpen their skills in that area. And so additionally, Rosie Bronberg was lifted up for her work on our popular kits for youth, teens, and families. And, and those kits are pretty impactful and are very, very popular. So congratulations, Sarah and Rosie. And then we continue to see stellar work in the library, both, you know, on the front lines and behind the scenes. So thank you to all our staff. Our October safety topic was all about healthy sleeping habits. We sort of recycle a lot of these topics, just because they're popular ones, and they're very timely, depending on the time of the year. And so I really want to uplift the Safety and Wellness Team. Wellness and safety is a big part of making our employees whole. It's not just about paying them and giving them benefits. More of the benefits are also around the recognition, the wellness topics, and all the other intangibles that goes into being an employer, and for us, being leadership. So I really want to underscore that, because I think sometimes those things go unnoticed, or unsaid, or sort of really under the radar. But, you know, wellness is a big part of what we do, again, and it's, it's timely topical information that, that aids into a healthy and happy workplace. And that's really it. It's building people up and making sure that they're, we're heavily invested in all facets of their lives, personal wellness and professional wellness. And so, and lastly, the last update I have, which I'll turn over to Mike, we, this is still nebulous area for us, but downtown Birmerton is still closed. And so just want the board to know that, that work is continuing. We don't have a firm timeline for reopening, but I'll turn it over to Mike, who has some more information. Maybe not much more than I've just given you.
Maybe not too much more than that, because I still shy, I'm still shying away from specific dates. But I was in the building this morning. The HVAC contractor, who has been working on behalf of the city, is essentially wrapping up their construction part of that project, and will be working for the next, for the remainder of this week, and in the next week on cleanup, and startup procedures, and things like that, just making, testing and making sure that all of their systems are functional, so they can turn that over to the city. We did kick off some of our KRL-sponsored work inside the building today. And we are, have begun rewire, our low voltage rewiring program in there to redo all of the network access and wiring inside the building. We're also going to be doing some furniture moves over the rest, remainder of the week, getting ready for staff to come back in the building, tentatively. And again, this is going to be exclusively up to the city when they turn that building back over to us. But I would say, I'm hoping mid-November, we're going to have staff back in the building, targeting early December, potential opening. Nobody hold me to that. This isn't really on TV or anything, is it? So, I, I think we're looking early December for reopening. But again, it's, it's tentative still at this time. I'm hoping to know more, I say this every time, I'm hoping to know more by the end of the week. But I continue to stay in touch with the city, and as their contractor wraps up, I think their confidence level goes, will go up as to when they'll give us access back to the building.
Thanks, Mike. And yeah, so obviously not too much more information, but it's important to note that, you know, it's, the closure is obviously going to reap its rewards in a warmer building in the winter, and a cooler building in the summer. And then one of the ancillary benefits of being closed now is that our downtown Birmerton staff, and I can let Shannon speak to a little bit of how they've been deployed, but it takes the pressure off other staff with, at this time of year, which starts to be the holiday train from, you know, close to Thanksgiving on through Christmas. We've got a lot of staff taking off. So we've got staff deployed at different locations. Shannon, did you have any more to add to that, other than they're there?
Yes, they're there. So we have staff at a couple locations. It's been, it's been a boon, I think, both for frontline service, but also for some of the projects that we have going on, to have a little bit extra bandwidth. It's not something you can plan for, but boy, having a highly technical supervisor be able to jump in and help us with printing. Gillian English has been able to help us day-to-day at each location, and be sort of the connective tissue with that project over the last couple weeks. It's been, it's been a wonderful bonus that we couldn't have planned for. Yeah.
Thanks, Shannon. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
I have a question, Jason. One of the things that is a huge vacuum here in this county is the ability to print, and the library offers those services. And they just recently changed. I had some staff come in, and they needed copies. And they were so excited, but they couldn't remember what the new procedures were. Could you, could you share that? Because it's something that many people in the community still don't know, that the library offers such a valuable service.
Yeah, thanks, Marwan, for the question. And we're really new at, we've just implemented a new, some new printing software. And I'll let Shannon and Mike speak to the implementation of that and the process a little bit. Either of you can, can take it and explain that process better than I could.
Sure. So, we, I'd love to say that we have a name for it. I think we've sort of taken to calling it our TBS Printing System. A little bit of context, we, for, for many years, and for quite a while prior to my arrival, the library has utilized a system produced by a company called Envisionware. And it's called PC Reservation and LPT-1. If anybody understands that reference to LPT-1, it's, that's how old the system is. But that's the printing aspect for the public computers in the library. And that manages access, patrons' access to a computer, and then how they manage their print releases to the public printers. So that whole system was very, very outdated. It was very difficult for us on the IT side to maintain and do updates with, and it was very cumbersome, and it was just getting clunky, I think, is probably a good word for the public services staff to utilize. As we came out of COVID, and we're reopening, and the discussions were happening about reducing the amount of free printing allowed in the branches, and going back to charging beyond a certain point, we started evaluating a, different options that were out there. And what we selected was this system called PaperCut, which is tied with a secondary system called MyPC. So MyPC now handles the log-on and patron access to public computers, and the system called PaperCut handles the print management. Both of those systems are, you know, TBS is the name of the subcontractor who brings all that together and makes it functional for us, for our use. So now, all that to say, that we now have several new options for patrons to be able to print to our public access printers in the libraries. As, just as before, you can come into any branch, you can sit down at one of our public computers, log on to that computer, and then send print jobs into the print queue, and they can, then you, you can then release them at the print stations inside the library. In addition to that now, you can come into the library with your own handheld device, your mobile device. You can print from your phone inside the library. You can bring your own laptop and log on, and send from anywhere, basically at home, inside the branch, from your own devices. You can send print jobs into our, into that same print queue, and print to any of our branches. You can access that remote print queue through a mobile app on your phone or a mobile device. You can access it through by going onto our website and following the link that takes you to a drag-and-drop screen, where you put in your library card code number, and your barcode, sorry. And it, so it knows who you are. You drag and drop all your files right onto the screen, and then you can go to, show up at any location, and you can recover your print job directly from the print queue and print it out right there. Also, you can email. That's, that's another option. So we have all kinds of different and new ways to support our patrons' ability to print inside the library, in addition to our return to charging for excessive amounts of printing. So, hopefully that answers the question that you kind of were asking. But the easiest way, by far, the, the two easiest ways to accommodate a patron's need, one, coming into the branch, using a public computer, sending that print job directly into the queue, and then walking up to a printer and releasing it there. The second easiest way is the drag-and-drop screen, which is accessed through a link on the webpage. So that's, that's what I use very often for testing and whatnot. It's really easy. So.
Thanks, Mike. You know, it's a pretty layered process, but, you know, I think the best thing I can say is we have wonderful staff that will walk patrons through that process. And to really speak to what Mike talked about in terms of how to do it, one of the things we did, and it was a pandemic-driven measure because of, you know, economic issues, we were unlimited free printing for a bit. That's not sustainable with, you know, ink in particular. And so we've just reverted back to a pay model. However, we are still allocating $10 a week to patrons to print. And that is renewable, I think, on a weekly basis, if I'm correct, Shannon and Mike. And so we still, there's still an amount of free printing, and that, that's, you know, quite a bit of printing for folks. And, and our staff are really good at, you know, working with folks who may be short on resources. We're always giving and generous with patrons, and can, you know, that's what customer service is all about. So, the process is pretty user intuitive. We're still supportive to our patrons of print. We're just not allowing unlimited sheets of paper to go through our machines. And, and the upkeep on, you know, those machines are used a lot, and there's the upkeep involved, maintenance costs. So, we're happy to provide a thorough presentation to the board if needed. But yeah, we're happy with the new process so far, and we're working through it.
Thank you for the explanation. As a patron, and for many other folks, that's a game-changer for us, to have the accessibility, to not have to go out to Silverdale, for those of us that are downtown. And as more people learn about this service, again, I just, I can't talk about it more. It's, it's a huge deal.
Yeah, I mean, I think this, I wasn't, I was only slightly being facetious. I think this does beg for a presentation, because, you know, one of the things I've seen in, is, I've got nice windows in my office. I can see sometimes folks walking up and down. I've seen people I've known from the community who've come in and have been printing. I saw someone the other day, and I kind of ran out to say, hey, how you doing? And they were just there to print. I mean, people from all walks of life are using our resources, and not just people who are, you know, have a lack of resources. I mean, for printing, it's, it's hard to upkeep. I need a, I need a print cartridge right now. My kids use all my, my ink. And so it's really convenient to be at the library, because you don't have to worry about the hassle. You can just get in, print your job, and go. So it is an enormous resource for the county, and certainly we'll talk about the investments for that, for the county, and, and future board meetings. But that's all part of our support to the community, and, and hopefully will be reflected in our strategic plan about, you know, part of our mission, and how we, we support folks here in the county. Any other questions?
I just want to quickly add, Marwan, for your proselytizing. I appreciate that. The $10 credit is also for copies. So I know copies are also surprisingly needed and well-used in our community, and, and that $10 credit goes towards that as well.
Thanks, Shannon.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions for Jason? Okay, with that, our next agenda item is correspondence. We don't have any. And so that moves us into old business. And within old business, our second reading of two different policies. I do believe these came through in August. I was gone that meeting. So, Jason, do you want to start? Looks like Jason and Mike, you're up, in terms of support of the second reading of the Video Security Library Policy.
Sorry. So for the Video Security Policy, I'm going to withdraw my request to have the board approve the approve this policy now based on late communication to our union partners on questions they've had about specifics on this policy. And so due to our late response on that, I'd like to allow for an opportunity to gather any more feedback and to respond to more feedback from our union partners on the implication of this policy for staff. And so having just found that out, I'd like to withdraw. I'd still like to talk about the purpose of the policy. The intent, obviously, is to provide a policy on how cameras are used in the library to protect people and assets and monitor conditions, namely weather conditions. And so the policy's already, again, undergone a legal review. And it has been sent to labor partners. And we've had a lot of back and forth with our labor partners on a great number of things. And so I think we just, we didn't track this communication as well as we should have. So it'd be prudent for me to withdraw a request for the board to vote on this one until next month, until we've had enough time. So I'd like to defer this until next time. And so we are prepared to move on the draft photography and videography policy, however.
Great. You know, I think that's a sign of the fact that the process is working right. When we move to a process where as policies are being updated and we have a first reading, it does give our other constituents more of an opportunity to weigh in. So we appreciate that there will be times when we need to take those off track or slow down a little bit to be able to accommodate that public feedback. So I think that's great. If you want to then move on to the photography and video recording library policy, second reading.
Yes. So for this one, and just to refresh everybody's memory, the purpose of this policy is to essentially lay out ground rules for the public regarding photography and video recording in our library. More specifically, it kind of lays out the protections of photographers and videographers under the First Amendment while also outlining when film, filming and recording is not permissible in public spaces. And, and it's also to provide staff instruction on how to handle violations of patron conduct regarding filming and video recording and, and how to handle situations in which persons are violating the patron code of conduct around this specific policy. And so Jeannie, did you want to speak more to this policy? Do you have any more to add? No. Any questions from the board? If there, yes.
No, are there further questions from the board? No, good. Okay. Well, if there aren't any questions, we'll take a motion to advance this policy.
I'll motion to approve the photography, photography and video recording library policy.
I second.
Thank you. Further questions or discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of approving the motion that's been put forward to approve the photography and video recording library policy? Say aye.
A lot of y's in there.
There is. Sometimes it's just hard. Good. Okay. That brings us down to new business. Look, we've got a fair amount of policies moving through here. The naming library policy, this is a first reading of the new naming or an updated naming library policy. Jason and Wendy?
Yeah, so this is an updated policy. I think its last crossing of the board was, I believe, 2019. And so the purpose is to, we want to acknowledge naming conventions that are not only reflect the geographical locations of a library, but also include conventions for naming branch locations that recognize an individual's, individuals' names for recognition of an exceptionally substantial contribution that also align with the library's mission and vision. And so we will also want to reflect that this policy, we want to reflect properly the authority of the Board of Trustees to approve naming proposals for capital projects where donors would receive naming recognition for significant donations for support of construction or for construction of new libraries or renovated library facilities. And so this policy has been amended to include such language. Wendy, did you have any comments specifically on parts of this policy that reflect the foundation's intent to convene naming opportunities for Port Orchard specifically and other library capital projects?
I would just say that, yes, so we've had a naming policy. The library's had a naming policy for a number of years. Before we move forward with another capital campaign, we really wanted to take the opportunity to request some additional clarifying language to the policy around how we would name libraries and adding structure for naming both interior and exterior spaces. And then also adding some structure to how naming is approved and when necessary renamed, when library buildings may be renamed or naming may be rescinded. So that was really the impetus behind suggesting some, or proposing some suggested changes. And then once we are, once this naming policy is approved, then our intention would be to bring forward the naming structure that we're proposing for Port Orchard, which would then be in alignment with this policy.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Wendy. So I had a question just looking at, only because I was looking at another naming policy here recently. The, this, the minimum of 50% of total project costs, is that, did you do that in review of other libraries? I, I call it out only because I see collections in here too. So it seems all-inclusive in terms of what the threshold, the minimum threshold in terms of naming. I'm not suggesting it needs to be less. I just know it's significant. It's really in the procedural side of it.
Yeah. And the, yes, go ahead, Jeannie.
I'd say when we're talking about collections specifically, when we're naming collection, it's a collection of, it's not the collection as a whole, but a collection of items together. So it would be 50% of the cost of that collection. So if it was like an early learning collection or a collection on travel that happened to connect with a particular donor, we've had instances in the past where we create a collection specifically around donor requests and then that would be.
So an example, this, Jeannie would, because this is really under the section of naming a branch library. So then we see this framing of 50%, but it's conceivable you would have an opportunity in a new branch or an updated branch where somebody wants a collection stored there, right? So we're not talking about potentially name that branch building. All those costs are added. It may be pieces of these costs.
Right. The policy address, assets, rooms, spaces and libraries as a whole. So it would depend on what we're naming.
Okay. Yeah. I think we might just look because that's actually all appearing as a bullet under naming the branch. And so.
And that's under the procedures.
And it's under procedures. And, and yet you've got to call out all these areas.
Yeah, we could definitely address it.
Great. Thank you for that. Are there other, this is really important, I think, just in general, A, as philanthropy becomes more integrated into the library, but it's also important, I think, just in general for the circumstances when perhaps naming might not be driven by philanthropy. So being able to look forward and be inclusive about when do we retain or preserve those opportunities and when is it more important in some locations to reflect the community or the culture or an individual? So it's good to see this be more inclusive. Are there other questions about the naming policy? Great. Sounds good. The next. We're not approving it, though. This is a first reading, right? We're not approving this today.
Well, it's an amended policy, so it's, it's at the board's leisure, what you'd like to do. If you'd like to look at this more thoroughly and come back next month, we're certainly amenable to that. Because I know typically we've convened first and second readings for brand new policies, but for amended ones, we've taken the feedback and, and then gone through an approval process. So I'm comfortable with where the board wants to move with this particular policy.
Looking to you.
It'll take some time.
Do you want to take a little more time?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we had, we had one session a few months ago where Gina had some feedback for us. And so maybe we should give her a chance.
Bring it back in November.
And I think that's prudent considering the fact that the full board isn't here and the full leadership team isn't here, although they've seen this policy.
Yeah.
Again, we're not in a rush to do this. I think, you know, bringing it back next month for an approval is certainly fine with us.
And for, I mean, it really is, the, the board is approving the policy, which is pretty high level. But in my case, I was definitely looking to the next level of, of application and procedures, which is really the level of instruction, given that this also comes through us in terms of final approval. It'd probably be good if people took a deep look at those guidelines to make sure that the staff have been working on it a while, but to make sure that they're clear enough in the moment to guide decision-making and intent. So you can bring this back. Okay, good.
Thank you.
I'm going back to this. I literally can't. I'm never printing out that PDF version again. So the next item on the agenda is related to Resolution 202304, which is really establishing the dates, the times and the locations for our regular monthly board meetings for the calendar year of 2024. This is typically not a controversial.
No. It's really, you know, it's a simple formula. We meet the third Tuesdays of every month. And so plugging that formula into 2024, you have those dates and we know the times because those don't change and our location will also be here. So unless the board has any reservations about those times, dates and the location, then we'd ask the board to approve that resolution.
It's one of the easiest things we can do all day. I'll take a motion.
I motion to approve it.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor of approving Resolution 202304, which establishes the dates, times and locations of our monthly regular meetings for the 2024 calendar year? Please say aye. Great. Similarly, Jason, we have another one to kick up, which is Resolution 202305, which establishes the schedule of paid holidays and all staff training dates for the calendar year.
Yes. Thank you. And, and before we move on to that, my trustee, executive assistant, Tammy, has corrected me. It is the fourth Tuesday of every month, except November and December where we run into holidays. So that is the correction for the tape.
For the table. We got it.
All right. Thank you, Tammy.
Good. We all need guidance here and there.
We all need a Tammy.
Yeah, we all do.
Yeah, so the Resolution 202305 establishing the schedule of paid holidays and all staff training dates is before you. Again, follows a formula. All the major holidays that are celebrated by the library. I think the, the only thing that needs to be called to your attention is we are adding a second staff development day. As we've talked in previous meetings, the goal for us as a leadership team is to continually train, develop, grow with our staff. And so we thought, we have a larger staff day that's in October every year where all staff convene. And then the March staff day has been added and that one will be more of a team-centric staff because there is a need for our teams to do more robust development away from the larger group. And so that will be one that directors will support, obviously in different locations. But mainly it's for teams to engage in specific development, you know, for their particular teams in the work that they do for the library. And so that is the added staff day for the spring. Having said that, we would ask the board again to approve Resolution 202305.
Great.
Are any no questions or concerns?
Yeah. Are there any questions or concerns over? Take a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Assuming there's no discussion, but for the sake of protocol, I'll ask. Hearing no further questions or discussion. All in favor of approving Resolution 202305 that establishes the schedule of paid holidays and all staff training dates in the calendar year 2024? Say aye. Aye. Thank you. Back to here. And now we're under new business, the 2024-2029 Strategic Plan. Jason and Jeannie?
And Shannon. So I'm thrilled we're finally at a place where we can share this draft strategic vision for the library for the next five years. Board, as you know, we've been working on this for about a year, actually longer. We started this process, just want to talk a little bit about how we got here because it's important to talk about the road. We started early '22 with meetings with, when I was new to, with me and Jeannie, as she's the Director of Strategy and Communications, and really talking about the last plan, what we both liked, disliked, wanted to see differently and, quite frankly, which direction we felt like the library had it based on our early conversations and leadership and so forth and so on. So out of that, we hired, we, we hired a consultant. We interviewed a couple of consultants. Jeannie and myself and Shannon was involved in that process. We landed on Eric Mead of Holmine Strategy Group, who convened several meetings with us to figure out what our path would be and what our intentions were and what our priorities were. Having said that, we met with this unit here for, for a retreat in September of last year on Bainbridge Island to sort of kick off our strategy work. And that, I think, was very well received. And then we, then convened Staff Day 2022 where Mr. Mead did a bit of work with staff around where they saw the library. And we convened a survey after that in which we gathered data from our staff on perceptions of the library, their hopes, dreams and aspirations of where they thought the library should go. And, and so we're gathering data at this point. And then we coupled that with lots of other data from the 2021 Director Survey, the Community Need Survey, and, and actually taking data from the census, KITA data, voices of nearly 1,200 community members, in particular with that Director Survey. And then we kind of leaned heavily into that data to really produce outcomes. Also in between that, we held a staff, we had a community listening session last February, I believe, and the board was involved in that. Key staff members from the library and community members were invited to that session. And so out of all that data over the last several months, we've had retreats with leadership and the board. We've unpacked that data with both leadership and the board. And we've done a lot of, you know, putting together common threads and synthesizing all the information, sifting through that data and, and getting the themes that you will see before you that will be talked about by Jeannie and Shannon. And so lastly, and most notably, I want to point out that this strategic plan is a five-year framework for success. And why we're calling it a five-year framework for success is because we're in challenging times. We often mention what's been thrust upon us out of the pandemic. Most, the most salient thing is the economic turmoil that we are currently faced with, not only the library in terms of stagnant growth and stagnant revenue, but also, you know, our, really our, our operating costs are going up, but our, you know, revenues remain flat. And so that's, that's the place where we're at. And also we're in a place of changing dynamics with communities, social unrest and the like. Libraries in particular, along with challenges that are being thrust upon libraries and most notably intellectual challenges, we're really finding ourselves at a crossroad. So in really thinking and talking with leadership, our idea of this framework, framework for success is to really outline what the future looks like in the next five years. Why five years? There's a critical window of opportunity to sort of realign ourselves. Our critical, our essential work remains the same. And so Shannon will talk a little bit about that. What you'll see before you is that a critical work that our library staff does remains unchained. But the direction that the library needs to move in order to achieve stability and to remain stable over time is why it's a five-year plan. And so as we've considered just how much we've changed in an organization, it's, it's really become clear that this plan and our mission will constantly be evolving. And so. And so today, we'd like to share with you a really high-level overview of the plan, and we invite you, the board, our community, which involves our, you know, internal community, our staff, and our outward community, who are all of our patrons and our community organizations, to provide feedback, because this is now a public document that still needs a bit of massaging, still needs a bit of work. But we're not done yet. We've got to add a little more to it. We've got to amend it a bit, and we want to really just leverage the, the opportunity here to have a discussion about what you see before you. And so I want to turn it over to Jeannie to walk through the mission, vision, and values.
Thank you, Jason. After more than a year working on this, I'm really excited to be presenting the results of our strategic planning process. As Jason touched on earlier, in this journey, it became apparent how we've grown as an organization. So somewhere along the way, we really decided that we were reflecting on the foundational pieces of our organization, our mission, vision, and values, and decided that part of the creation of this strategic plan was a revision of those elements of who we are as an organization. This is to further clarify some of the leading pieces of our brand and give us more effective tools to really help guide us in the five years ahead, but also create something a little bit more strong to guide us beyond that time period. So expanding on our mission, vision, and values, we've also identified three strategies. We're just going to touch on the top level of those, and we'll get into those a little bit more in the next meeting. And then we've also identified five priority areas that have been called out in the strategic plan, and Shannon's going to share those in a moment. Together, these pieces form the foundation of our strategic plan that we're calling our Framework for Success. So I'll start with the mission. It's not easy to create a mission for a library, because we serve everyone and our work is very diverse and complicated. We also wanted to adapt some of the pieces of our mission that have really ignited our staff, specifically that element of inspiration. So we wanted to make sure that we retained some of that, but we also wanted to create a little bit more clarity and continue to simplify the mission so that it's something that people within our organization and outside of our organization could really internalize and remember and really find as a kind of guiding star for, for our organization moving forward. So. Back, back. Okay. So the new mission that we have developed through lots of conversations with the board and leadership team and all the data that we got from our staff is inspiring curiosity and connection. And then moving forward beyond that, building on the mission, we have a new vision statement that provides the aspirational direction for our strategic plan. While our mission tells us what our purpose is, the vision shows us the direction that we want to go and what we want to achieve. So for this five-year plan, our vision statement is, "A collaborative community inspired by curiosity and connection, so that all people have the opportunity to grow, belong, and We also reevaluated our values, distilling them down to three principles that will guide our words, thoughts, intentions, and behaviors in the years to come. Those new values are equity, service, and curiosity. Service speaks to our reason for being. We serve our community, and it speaks to our commitment to continually ask, listen, adapt, and prioritize our user experience, evolving with the changing needs of our community. Through equity, we're committing, we're communicating our commitment to strive for a true access and opportunity for all, promoting just and fair treatment by asking others what they need to succeed and creating space for full participation. And with curiosity, we're going beyond education and learning, which is always foundational for libraries. Curiosity speaks to our need to explore possibilities, provoke wonder, foster a deeper understanding of ourselves, and invite empathy and inclusivity towards others as we support meaningful change. I touched a little bit on our three strategic priorities, which is fostering, welcoming, and belonging, building collective impact, and thriving ahead. These three things are what we built all our goals around in our strategic plan, and we'll dive a little bit deeper into that into our next meeting. But for right now, I'd like to pass it over to Shannon to talk about the five priority areas.
Thank you. So the priority areas really build upon the values as their foundation, but also, I think, bring those values to life through our programs and services. I think that's a helpful way to think about them. So for example, I won't go through all, all of them, but if you take making and interest-based learning, that concept really reflects our unique capacity and ability within the community to not think about learning as something to test for or something to follow a specific curriculum on. It's about inspiring curiosity and seeing where that takes us. And we really are in a unique position to be able to do that in the community, to really provoke that curiosity. Or for example, if you take equity and tie that to early learning, it's really thinking about what disparities are there in the community in terms of kids being ready to start school, ready to learn, and also about building a community for parents to feel welcome and, and that they belong to a community of other parents. So it's really about not only pushing that, pushing for that educational piece, but allowing the space for the community to come together to support each other in that area. So all of these are areas that staff are already actively engaged, whether it be through our own programs or through partnerships that we have. And what I really love about pulling these forward within the strategic plan is that it, it really demonstrates to the community the how and, and what we're doing specifically, and I think shows even our internal stakeholders, here's the work, and how do we all have a place in this? I think, you know, we talk about this at Leadership Team is a great example, but if early learning is a priority area for the organization, that's not just frontline work. Of course, the frontline work is key and important, but what does that mean for our spaces? And what does that mean for how we talk with funders about the work that we do, et cetera, et cetera? Or how we clean from a custodial perspective? So I'm just really excited to bring this work to life in a bigger way and to see where those conversations can take us even further.
Shannon, I have a question for you, just given, because this really has been, you know, it's been a very iterative work in progress across a lot of time. And I know in this case, I mean, criticism in the past has been that sometimes staff don't see themselves in the document. And so this is really exciting. This has actually changed even from when we last saw it. It's gotten more refined. And so I'm just wondering, has it been socialized a little already to the, you know, in its current state? And how are staff receiving it?
Yeah, so I would say that most of these themes are things that we've been building upon over time. And I think some of those tweaks that you've seen and some of the ways that we're talking about it is, has really been driven from how the work has evolved and changed and the feedback that staff have shared over time, particularly looking at something like community and social connectedness. That is really key to success in any of the other areas. And so for patrons to feel like they have a space where they belong, where they feel welcome, so that they can learn and develop relationships and do all the other great things that we're doing, has really been a focus area for staff over, you know, even before the pandemic. That's been really important. So it's, it's great to see how we're, we're doing these things, and then how do we continue to evolve and flex with how community is changing?
I also think what's really interesting in here, I was struck by this when we saw it before, was taking the time. I mean, because that's one of the bigger opportunities, I think, we all have as we represent the library, but taking the time to really articulate the context in which the library sits. And so who, who we are as a library, which is, I mean, it's just phenomenal in terms of the, the reach and impact, but also how that sits down in the context of a fast-growing Kitsap County on top of it. And so to be able to also pull forward and capture that dynamic even in the county, I mean, it's a far-flung county. I heard somebody just say the other day, they lived in South Kitsap and they needed to drive to Bainbridge, and I was like, wow, that's a really long, that's a long drive, right? And if we've lived here a while, we don't think anything about it, because we kind of, sometimes more of us do that more often than not. But to be able to capture that breadth and depth of a county and all the communities within it, whether it's geography, people who have resources or don't have resources, and that the library really is a resource for everybody. I mean, so I think this really sets, I think as a trustee, what I see here is, is really a valuable document that helps support all of us in how do we better talk about the library as we prepare to do more outreach, whether it's related to campaign work in South Kitsap, or even as the library prepares to go out for levy and to, because it's complicated. And we all think we know the library, and yet we don't.
Yeah, to, to build upon that, I am really impressed with how this has all come together, especially as, as we had our strategic plan work, I was a few weeks ago, and I think that we were all, as we were all brainstorming, there were kind of darts around all the words that we were all thinking, right? We were, I think we were all, a lot of us were on the same page. And to be able to see this on paper so succinctly and efficiently is, is really great. In addition, capturing the passion from staff that we see, you know, at the library every day and, and in the meetings here. So it's, it's something that when I read it, it's very clear, but it also gives me energy when I read it. So I really appreciate that also, sections like around the future of libraries, I think is great, and the financial resilience. So it can really put into perspective, and I mean, it was, it was kind of a lighthearted comment earlier, but the fact that you can print from your phone, you know, is fantastic. And that's not something you would expect from most other libraries. So the fact that we're, you know, this, this library system is forward-thinking and, and modern in an area where we, we have the resources to be and should be. So I think that this is great. Looking forward to diving in deeper, but thank you.
Just had to only add from my words earlier, just all the work that's gone into get this plan to where it is now, and the importance of the community and the social connectedness, but then also the, the interest-based learning, which is centering the community, right? So it's not just, this is what we provide to the community, but it's what the community wants. So I just really appreciate how that is tied together.
Thank you. A lot of work has gone into this, again, calling out the work of Jeannie and her brilliance and putting all of our disparate thoughts and words and, you know, thought bubbles, you know, being able to sometimes be around us enough to know what we're thinking and how to translate that into a document is not an easy task. And in particular, all the feedback that we've gotten from all of our leadership team, who all of them have been here and worked with staff and began to provide input, and Yeoman's work to Shannon for really being able to translate a lot of what we want to convey in this, because, you know, let's face it, we've said it time and time again, the face of the library, the folks who you see every day when you come into a library, you know, that's all Shannon's team, and that's a team she has to manage. So a lot of this work, even though all of our staff will be connected to it because it's part of their work, what'll be visible is, is public services teams who are, you know, translating this into the day-to-day actions that happen. So we're really excited about this, this plan. Obviously, we've got a little bit more to finesse, but I think it's, you know, it's just what we hope to have at this point. And so, you know, we've spent a lot of time, and, you know, something as important as this takes a lot of time to perfect and to put out. And so, and the real work really starts after it's out, because it's not enough to just have a roadmap, you still have to do the work. And so really speaking back to Stephanie, what you talked about earlier in, in terms of the staff, and I said earlier, their day-to-day work won't change, but how to translate this into, how do you align your work to, you know, our mission, our vision and values? That's the work of our team to implement that in trainings, to implement that in smaller team meetings. Jeannie and myself will likely be out on a road show to talk about, you know, taking time with staff to sit down and talk about how they see themselves in the plan and how to implement this on a daily basis. So the real work really starts after this is done. There's a lot of work to get everybody on board, and so we're looking forward to the challenge of that and onboarding the whole organization to this plan as well. So thank you for your feedback today. It really helps us out and lifts us up, so we appreciate you.
Any other comments? Great. Well, look forward, is it? Format matters too, Jeannie, right? So that's the other thing, is I, I know as these develop, everybody's just in it, and you're wrestling with it, and it's all there. But, but to also sort of frame this in a way like, okay, these, this framework for success, that's the light bite, right? If you want to go a little deeper into the, the plan, then you can go a little deeper, and then you can, you can get. So I think seeing it in context helps also, also helps accessibility, which is good. And I think the other thing we talked about, and I'm just saying this really because this was important, is we brought Jason on and realizing as you move forward, I think changing out language matters sometimes. And so relieving ourselves of the burden that it's a strategic plan, and so you have to have, you know, goals and objectives and tactics that all appear here and that are measurable, that, that proved to be onerous and not particularly inspirational, probably either. And nice at this point, I think, to say, here's the framework for success. It's really a strategic framework, and that the real work of moving the library forward happens in annual plans, which are really internal operational plans where they should be. And I, I think when we sort of changed the thinking that way, that was, that was helpful as well. But you still, I mean, I read this and felt inspired, right? You, it helps elevate everybody's heart rate in terms of the, the work that really you get to do and that we get to support, and so it's exciting to see this.
Yeah, thanks. I just mentioned a bit about metrics too, because I know we had long conversations about that, and, and I think we all know it here, but for the public, it's hard to measure the impact of what a library does in numbers, because it's not about numbers of cardholders, it's not about door counts. Those, all those things are great. You want folks to be using your libraries, but libraries have, the shape of libraries have changed a bit, how we deliver services have changed, so there's lots of other things to look at. We look for more anecdotal evidence of how a library's working and what the impact of our services are to our community. A lot of what we gather are, I just read, for instance, yesterday, there was a call that came in to Tammy about a patron who just wanted to reach out to me to thank Beth Stanback, who's our Public Services Supervisor at Sylvan, and I'll call her out now for exemplary service. And, you know, oftentimes, it's just, you just help somebody print a piece of paper, right? And I say just, I don't mean to say that lightly, because for a person coming in who might have challenges with technology, and I'm not suggesting that this person was, and I can't even quite remember exactly what the issue was that Beth helped her with. However, the point I'm getting at is that this woman was overcome with emotion at the depth of, of help she got, because probably in comparison to other agencies or other institutions, the thoroughness in which we delivered that help, she was just blown away by. So a lot of times we talk about metrics in a library, it's hard to really pin down what that is that makes us a success. It's not the number of cardholders, it's not the number or volumes of materials we have, or how much of it is checked out, because a lot of what happens with, you know, being fine free now, the way people check out and hold materials has changed. So there's a lot of different ways we can measure how the library is successful. So we wanted to stick away from a pure metrics conversation about what that pathway looks like in terms of, or how, when it's successful, what does it look like? And I think when it's successful, we're doing all these things, and we're also, the real And we're also, the real thing here is that we're shifting based on the needs of our community. And I think that's where we're really at here, is that as a community changes, we have to be nimble enough. And you saw that in the previous strategic plan, that it was a nimble. And so it was a nimble strategic plan. This one will be as well because we've got to prioritize what's, you know, needy for our community at that particular time. And so while those priority areas will still be there, we may have an initiative or a focus for a short period of time to be able to respond to a need. And so having said that, I think this plan allows us to do that. And I'm really proud of this team for putting in the work to get us here. It didn't seem like we'd, you know, get to this point, but we're here. And our path forward, and the last thing I'll say is just to give the board and the public full disclosure on what our intent here is to post this, is now it's available to be read and responded to. And now we take the time to carefully listen to the feedback that we're going to get from not only our board, but our staff and our community, and to listen to that and figure out if there's anything that can change and be impactful and make a difference. We'll allow ourselves a couple of months to do that. My intention is to ask the board in December to vote on this and to pass it for implementation for January so we can start off in 2024. And in the meantime, we'll be aligning our goals and, you know, getting ready to work on this, the implementation of this after January. So thank you.
Yeah, good. Great.
Really does take a village some days. We're now to the housekeeping portion. Really, the last item is just noting our next upcoming regular meeting, which is Tuesday, November 28th, which is preceded by a committee meeting, a finance committee meeting. We are sincere in the methodical way with which we're moving the business through the board. And now that the strategic, this initial publication is sort of out, we really do hope that people take the time to go through it and provide that feedback to all of us as we go forward. So with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.